Just ready?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Glad you could attend. It is Tuesday, October six, and it's six o'clock, and we're gonna have our work session. We stand, we do the pledge of allegiance to get the meetings. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, we'd like to have no in silence to honor our military, firefighters, sheriff's deputies, and road workers as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Tracy, can we enroll, please?
Trustee McGlaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Okay, so the first deadline here is old business. Nothing listed. I'm sure we got something to talk about. Do you have any questions you want to bring up first?
Oh. The issue two project that we had on Derby Road. I'd like to know exactly where we are with that project. Mr. Wolf?
Good evening, trustees, fiscal officer, and community. You have in front of you here a representative of your Choice One engineering company that helped put the application together. I'm gonna have you introduce him in just a second. You all received an email from Ohio, OPWAC, Ohio Public Works Commission Regional Director, that explained to you that Friday, this Friday, is the deadline to accept the funding that you trustees had already voted to accept in previous meetings, but to give them official paperwork back by Friday, or else you are turning your money back to the state of Ohio. So you have from today till Friday to get that accomplished if you choose to do so. So Choice One came today to be a resource for you, to ask questions from you. And so that's where we're at at this point, Mr. Mann.
Ms. Edwards, do you have any questions on this project?
Well, I didn't even get the email, so I don't know what to answer. I wonder what was placed around the line.
Okay, the Derby Road project. How are you?
I did not get the email, so I don't have any questions. Are you talking about a recent email, Mr. Wolf?
Sometime this week it was sent, but a letter was sent back in July one to you.
How did you get the recent email?
July, no, a letter was sent to you back in July one referring to project CD 32X slash CD 33X from Linda Bailey, the director of OPWAC. You also received a phone call from, or more than one, from the prosecuting attorney and the regional director of the Ohio Public Works prior to today, offering their help to you of any confusion or any help that you needed. Choice One has been available to help as well. So I have nothing more to say other than your application is sitting out there.
Did I introduce the guy from Pittsburgh?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce yourself since you're up front.
Yeah, I'm Troy Nice. I think you guys are used to having cable service with Jeff put up here. They couldn't make it tonight, and I'm gonna be involved with the project if it moves forward. So they asked me to come. She's breaking me on a lot of the information she's been able to provide. I'm not as knowledgeable as she is on some things, so I'm on the design side, but she broke me on a lot of the questions she thought might come up. So I will do my best to answer any questions that I have.
Okay, so I guess the first question I have is that, you know, as we all know, and we're repeating what is done in history, is that we make the points, and we got turned down in the original activity of this bond releases, money given out, correct? Reason why it got turned out?
I wasn't well that far back. All I know is that you are currently approved for the loan and the grant for $146,000.
Well, we wouldn't be here today doing this if we got approved first time. So history says that we got rejected first time, and we knew that the residents of the township needed this road taken care of. This road is in bad shape. Government is in bad shape. So we, as a board of trustees, put out an RFP to have this road and some other road worked up. And approved a contractor, the lowest bidder, JNA consultant, JA Construction, whatever it is, and we put out a resolution to give it to them and them own. And then somehow or another, it got where it was given to another contractor outside of the public meeting. I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but all of a sudden, somebody else has it. And they didn't work. The work was done. So we've already spent, I hear different numbers. The number I think I saw on the bill was $128,000 to have work done on Derby Road. And I don't wanna throw $128,000 away. So being in the world of construction for years, when you led a, in this original contract that we're talking about is from point A to point B, in the middle of those two points, in different spots in those points, we've dug the road up and we've redone the asphalt. Okay, so my question is, most contractors are still doing from point A to point B. They're gonna rip it out and they're gonna replace it. They don't care if you patched that or did this or did that. In this scope of work, also is doing curves, storm sewer, and other aspects of the road besides just this pavement patch that we did. And the pavement patch was done down to gravel. It was done correctly. But is this, if this contract is awarded, if we proceed with this and it's awarded to a contractor, in your opinion, are they, are they, or are they not willing to go around to work what we're already paid to have done?
It is our intention that the design scope will be working around three point to go out and inspect the pavement, the work that's been done, and we're gonna try to design around what's been done already as much as possible. I can't say, I mean, and once it goes out to build, the contractor is not just gonna do it of their own accord. They will, obviously, if they feel that they want to work at Ohio, they're gonna come to you and ask for additional funds. You can say, no, we're not gonna pay for that.
Well, and there again, the state of Ohio has approved the contract from point A to point B. To change that verbiage, to change the bid, to change all that, with the state of Ohio is a whole nother ballgame. Correct?
The contract isn't actually for, it doesn't specify what work needs to be done, is my understanding.
I agree, it gives, it gives...
Does it say that it needs to be full depth construction of the roadway?
It states, it states how much pavement you're doing, curves, sidewalks, catch basins.
The estimate that is correct. The estimate that we did for plumbing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what the state has approved and funded?
Correct.
Okay, so now you're gonna tell the state, wait a minute, we wanna work around these parts, so this $400,000, whatever it was, is gonna be less than that. That just seems, I don't see it, I don't see them saving what we've already paid money for. I don't wanna throw away $128,000. I can't get in writing that you're gonna work around that.
All right, let's clarify that number. $128,000 was for all the streets repaired, not the section of Kimmel from Infirmary, or section of Derby from Kimmel to Infirmary. So you've got probably less than 10% of that whole $130,000 spent that could be torn out, could be redone, but we're not throwing away $130,000 like you've been selling in the last two meetings.
Well, I don't believe you 10%, that's just number off the top of your head.
Well, is it true or false, the engineers are gonna come in and determine the scope of work on the next step?
That's correct, that's our intention.
So we're gonna find out the answer to that on the next step here.
So we still have a chance to...
So you were in favor of this project, Mr. Gofflin, previously when we went for issue two money. Why are you presenting arguments against it?
I'm questioning throwing our tax dollars away. Throwing away digging up the road work we've already done and throwing it away is what I'm questioning.
Well, we don't know if that's gonna get thrown away at this point. And even if it does, the overall improvement to that stretch of road is worth the stretch.
So you're worth, you're willing to throw away taxpayers' dollars?
It wasn't throwing away taxpayer dollars when we ordered it fixed because we didn't expect the issue two money to come in.
So we ordered it being done in a second contract that was not done in open meeting.
That has nothing to do with this discussion.
Okay, so if we say, we say, tell you to proceed, and you come back and find out that they will not work around the work that's been done, do we have a chance to still back out?
I believe so. I'm sorry, like I said, I'm all over this stuff, take the answer, but I think so, yes.
I need that.
As long as the work's not done.
I would need that, Riley.
Okay.
Any questions?
Now, we've got to give a yes or no by Friday.
I ain't gonna answer for you tomorrow. Is that, is that the only hurdle I don't need to jump?
It's a hurdle I have. Who else have any questions? Does that get outvoted? I've been outvoted before. Do you, do you, the other two trustees have any questions?
I think we need to... Ms. Edwards, are you gonna sign the paperwork if he answers this question?
No, because I still have a proprietary resolution. As the lawyer told you guys, it suggested a resolution. You guys still have not provided a resolution to tell me that money's gonna be in the budget next year.
In the way we are spending money in the road department, we had a bill from a local contractor. We'll discuss that later in the work session, but there's a lack of funds, time and time again, in the road department to pay bills. Correct? And you're gonna say, we're gonna tell them that two years from now, we're gonna have a couple hundred thousand dollars in the road department, and we're spending money like it's no more.
I'm not saying it's a subject when I can't guarantee there's gonna be some money allotted for it. If I have a resolution that says you will put that money in the budget, no, I'm not saying it.
So we're just gonna squander that money? You can't pass a budget resolution on money you don't even have.
And I can't sign a piece of paper if we don't have the money? I can't sign a piece of paper, I'm not putting my name on paper if we don't have the money. What sense does that make? If you can't pass the resolution, I can't sign the paper.
It's not required for the state.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, this is me signing a piece of paper. It has nothing to do with the state.
You're making up rules to...
No, I'm not. I am doing what I'm required to do.
And the road department is spending money time and time again without approval. Fixing this, fixing that, when it doesn't need to be fixed. And you want Tracy to sign a piece of paper that says she's gonna have a couple hundred thousand dollars in the bank, and she has no control over the money you're spending.
Is there confusion on how much is gonna be required when the project starts, if it goes forward?
What are the, what are the numbers?
So $41,204 is the local contribution. That's also the same number that it's gonna be local in time contributions, which is the word you guys will be yourself. That is what will be required immediately. Afterwards, you won't owe anything except for the loan, which will be, which will start the first of July or the first of Jan, or the last of January, following the end of construction. And that's when the loan starts, and we'll be buying the payments for $3,000 and change each payment.
$3,000 will change twice a year for 20 years.
Correct. But that's not a couple hundred thousand dollars due at the beginning of construction. I just wanted to clarify.
What, but the 82,408 is due?
Well, it's 41,204, but the 82,408 is doubled out because 41,204 is self-work that the township has offered to do.
Well, it's still gonna be a lot, but...
Okay. But the 41,204 is the amount of cash that will be needed.
And the balance on the loan, the 300,000?
The balance of the loan is 146,815.
That's after our contribution?
Correct. So there's 146,815. There's that in loan and that in grant. So the grant doesn't need, it's better than the loan at 0% for 20 years. Starting after construction is completed.
And if we pass on this money, we probably won't get another issue two grant for a very long time.
So how do you know that? Is that your opinion or what? How do you know that?
You're turning away money.
You made that comment to me before. How do you, you know the law? How do you know that?
Well, if you were still over the road department, you'd be...
You won't go there.
Yes, we do.
The way you run the roads? Okay, Mr. Mann, you got any more comments or questions on that topic?
No, I don't have any more. To be, if we can't pace this, then we just have to let it go. But Friday is the deadline.
I told you guys, too busy for now, it's been over a month, that I need it for a resolution. You guys continue to ignore that. I read the email, I'm not finished. I am not finished. I need a resolution in order for me to sign a piece of paper. I have a bond that I can protect, and I'm not just signing a piece of paper. If you cannot tell me the money's gonna be there, I cannot sign a piece of paper. What sense does that make if you can't tell me that money's gonna be there? Makes no sense at all.
So over the next two years, we're not gonna be able to come up with $40,000. The labor cost is already gonna be there. So... You can pick this thing apart with petty arguments, but the fact of the matter is, I mean, this is the first big break that we've got to repair major stretches of roads. And you wanna argue it away?
Well, I don't want to lose it, yeah? That's fine.
We can't do a budget resolution.
Oh, why can't you?
You're making up rules we don't need.
There's no rule, I'm not making up any rules. I'm asking you to do a legislative that you will have in the budget next year, the amount of money you need.
Well, we can't do that.
Okay, then I can't sign the paper.
So that's gonna be your excuse for not...
I said, there's no excuse. You just gave an excuse, you can't do it. I told you I can't do it.
It's not required, and how can we budget?
There's nothing, it is required. It is required to be in the budget to pay the bill.
Okay. What's the balance?
What's the balance? There's nothing. They just spent it all when you paid Buell Blacktop. You spent it all plus. We only budgeted $80,000, and you spent $130,000 on Buell Blacktop. So you spent it all plus.
Any more comments on this?
I can have an answer to the questions to Steve or whoever needs them tomorrow. So hopefully that can at least move us forward. Have potential getting this done on Friday.
So any more on business? Okay, I do. I'd like to talk about our meetings. This kind of brought up a new business. Wire has a comment about security standards of public meetings. But I'd like to talk about, we talked about it before, about speaking in our meetings on Zoom and make our meetings more open to the public. And I don't know the details, Tracy, you have to help me, but there's some money out there available that the state has made for this COVID issue. And, correct, Tracy, in regards to, everything we sit on a little nest egg of money that we don't use, it's gonna go back. And we'd really like to see our meetings go on Zoom. And so anybody in the township, anybody who wants to see them, driving down the road, going to the kid's place in Columbus, going to different places, those are all kinds of people that are doing it. And I know Jim has pushed for this before. So that's, I just got, I did some digging into it, and it's not very complicated. I think it's very, very doable. We can buy tablets for 120, 120, 130 bucks a piece. And right off the bat, we need one for each of us. Probably gave an eye just for us. And then what I've seen, what I've seen on the internet, other places do, is you can sign them out. So we have them in our administration office, which is supposedly closed. And they come sign them, a resident can come sign, come sign the tablet out, enjoy the meeting. Anybody, any, any of you, the two trustees, have any input on pursuing this venture? You talked highly of Jim. Do you still want to do that?
I think with respect to Mr. Mann's concerns for getting too busy at the meeting and his concerns with health risks, I think we need to have it in place. I'm curious to see what the man will be. Because we're not turning away that many people from the meeting. And a lot of the folks in our community are not legal, but I think we need to... I'm not sure how much is gonna be used, but I think for the lower threshold of readiness in there, I guess we're good.
Okay. So we would need to, we gotta spin this leg by wind, Tracy? Do you know the date by the top of your head? End of the month or something, or?
October 50th, we have to have it in Denver, but it's moved to November. Has to be in Denver by then. Not until the 7/31st. I mean, the 7/30th. So we have to have it PO written, the mountain on and everything, have that in mind in Denver. But we have to spend it before the 7/30th.
Really don't feel it's something we need to have to pay the computer people buckeye and pay them to conduct a meeting every, you know, every time for us. I'm on Zoom meetings several times a week with my employer. It's a real easy thing. So huge residents, if you have a computer at home, you could turn it on, and we would publicize the link to what the Zoom meeting is on our website. And you can do that, and we still have a time in our meeting for comments by citizens. And you'd be able to speak, and you can hear, you know, we all, we'd be sitting in this meeting with a laptop in front of us, a tablet in front of us, and we'd have a camera at us. But you would see everybody's little square in there. I don't know if you guys have ever been on Zoom before, but, so there's nine of us, there'd be nine little squares. And there are different ways to do it. Mine goes up, whoever's talking, you have nine little squares on the top, and then the big screen, whoever yaps, their picture gets bigger. So, but I think it's something we could do, and Jim made the comment that a lot of residents are not computer savvy, maybe you don't have the internet. I think if we could sign it out with the tablet in our funding and the way we do this, that tablet is signed out with a hotspot. So if you don't have, they say like West Union Road or whatever doesn't have very good internet. So when you sign that computer out for the day, you sign it out, and if you don't return it, you lose some money. But, and it has a hotspot wired in it, and you can, you can watch the meeting and make a comment. So I think we need to pursue this, guys. I mean, I think it's, especially since we can do it with money that's been handed to us to make the meetings public. I think we ought to start off with 25 or 30 at least tablets.
I'm okay with the Zoom concept, but buying equipment and providing that, I think we need to gauge the demand first. So because what if everybody in the township wants a tablet to watch the meeting?
For money that a lot of them don't have, we can get, but the township can't have.
Well, you can also do it on your phone. Most, I don't know, okay, is there anybody in the audience I know, whatever, have a smartphone? I mean, so you can pull a tablet up on your smartphone, on your phone either, also. You can do, I got Zoom on my smartphone for meetings I do. I do EPA inspections, and I'm on Zoom, and they're looking at the stuff in the water plant or whatever through the Zoom. They're inspecting my facility through Zoom. Because with COVID, they can't come to the plant. So I understand what you're saying, but it's also not money coming out of our pockets, so to speak. It's money that's been, hey, if you need this, use it. So how would you think we ought to see what the demand is? Any suggestions, how you wanna go about knowing what number we need?
Let's broadcast a couple of meetings and see what they do.
So first of all, first thing is, we have a deadline to get the money in cash. But we couldn't do that, but we've gotta realize there's a deadline to get that money in cash. We brought that to me, and then maybe tie it to the deadline.
Okay, so we encumber, I'm just gonna load them. Say you encumber $50,000, but you only want 20, you only need $25,000. So we encumber, say, we want X amount, I'm just loading them up, I don't know what's gonna be, Jim. We say we're gonna need this amount of money, I'd rather ask for too much. And then, okay, we see the demand, and not many people are interested. We only need 10 computers, 10 tablets.
Who's gonna administer this? Sign it, move it in and out. Fix it, answer questions when people have problems. We're opening the door on a lot of issues that we don't wanna get into providing equipment. If we're gonna provide equipment, you have to provide tech support. If somebody already knows how to do it, they probably already have a computer.
So when they sign it, when they sign it out, use the on button. And at seven o'clock, there's an icon on that tablet, the Zoom, hit the Zoom button. It's already programmed in there, the link, hit the link, then it comes on.
Okay, but before that, is it going to be all the setting up all those laptops?
Well, I guess we'll have to play one time fee toys to have them do that for us then. I mean, I'd volunteer, but I don't have the time. I'm willing to do it, I've done it for my, for my guys. The guys are, the guys are running me, I set them up on... The guys that are running me, I set them up on them so they can join the company meetings. It's not that hard to do.
I understand, and I just said, that's what stuff you have to visit.
Well, if we put that value of the tech support to get it started in our encumbrance money, we've got to get these meetings out there.
It has to be done soon, but the soon has to be made. I passed up a piece of paper that said all the papers, or that passed out it. Basically, when you want to use these funds, those are guidelines you have to look at. There's what they call a three problem test from the start of what can this be used for? And the three, the three things under the permits components can only be used for expenses that. And when you start looking at the funds you want to use it for, you have to look at those three things. And the important thing is, is that we have the document, document, document. Every day, we have a documentation because when we use that fund, they will be looking at those funds. Everybody's trying to get away because they're giving us so much fun. Except I heard, I haven't seen officially that we're getting a third distribution. We already had two, one for 59, a one for 29. And we're getting a third distribution.
I just don't think we're going to touch enough in the public buying these set tablets because it's still, that puts a limit in some ways on what we provide. And it's like, okay, our job is to broadcast the meeting and it's available to the public. So whether you, so that makes it open. Okay? Having a set number of tablets makes it close. But then you're still, you got theft, you got break-ins, you got tech support. There's a lot of logistics that I don't think as a township we're prepared to deal with and manage. I think maybe if things are going good, possibly, but to spend $25,000 on equipment just like that, no. I think we need to measure the demand before we're going to spend that kind of money.
Okay, so then to be able to do that, we still need a computer device sitting in front of everybody that speaks to the meeting. So zoning, code, sheriff, administrator, trustees, the fiscal officer. You would need a computer, a tablet or something sitting in front of every one of them so they have a camera. And we're on, we're on a social media, we're on Zoom to produce that meeting. So we need to at least do that. Correct. So I agree with you, we want to say, you're saying we don't want to buy the computers or the tablets to give, to the public to do that.